Alderman, to order, please, will stand for the invocation given by Pastor Stevens, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We proudly bow before you here in this place, and we praise you as King of kings and Lord of lords, and we thank you for the beautiful day that you've given us, and your word tells us you were the Creator and Possessor of heaven and earth, so thank you for this day that you've given us and we've been able to enjoy, and thank you for all the blessings that you bestow upon us, you've been so gracious to us, and we are so thankful for it, we thank you for the city, and the ways that you blessed this city, and in numerous ways, and help us to be good stewards of that which you blessed us with, thank you for our mayors, city leaders, and all of the incredible work that they do, and what we pray your grace upon them, and pray your strength to them, pray your wisdom even as they meet tonight, but their time together here will be productive for the benefit of our city, so, Lord, thank you again for all of your incredible gifts, for every food and perfect gift is from you, so thank you so much for who you are and for what you've done for us, in your name we pray.
Amen.
All right, thank you, everyone, and for those of you who didn't watch the baseball game today at lunch, or you missed a good one, the Dogs won handily, it was a great game, so, anyway, just enjoying that, and Alderman Walker, I believe, has dedicated himself to go to Omaha, so, we're all jealous, we will go along with, oh, I'm so sorry, I forgot, Alderman Carver, are you there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, that's right, Alderman Carver is attending telephonically, so everything we will do will be by roll call vote, and I'm sorry, Alderman Carver, I completely forgot you.
No problem.
All right, we will move along now to the approval of the official agenda with consented items, and I have a couple of things that I need to make mention of, we need to remove item two under planning from the agenda, it is, we did not get the advertisement in, so we will be bringing that back at a later date, and I believe that's all, we do have one addition to the agenda, which I think I have mentioned to everyone, but it is item C under Mayor's Business, and that came up late after our work session, and it was something that was time critical, so we put it on the agenda, and it's good news because it is a grant for a million or so dollars for sewer improvements with a 75-25 match, so I don't know how we can have a much better day than that, all right, do I have anyone who wishes to make any changes to the agenda or to the consented items on the agenda? Do I have any changes to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda with the items as mentioned, both deleted and the one that was added on that is currently on this agenda?
So, move, ma'am.
Motion from Alderman Little, second from Alderman Miller, and if you would answer, as the city clerk, call your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yay.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yay.
Alderman Little.
Yay.
Alderman Walker.
Yay.
Alderman Miller.
Yay.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yay.
All right, thank you, by a vote of seven to nothing, the motion passes, and our official agenda is approved, then, in that case, I will be reading the consent agenda items, so if you will bear with me, first item is consideration of the minutes of the May 15, 2018 recess meeting of the Mayor and Board of Aldermen of the City of Starkville, Mississippi. We have consideration of requesting a presentation by Dr. Jason Barrett of possible options and impact of water and sewer rate changes for the purpose of dedicating funds to the replacement of aging and existing infrastructure, and the airport, we have consideration of a lease agreement with Robert Ward, the only bidder of approximately 66.75 acres of agricultural land, two is consideration of advertising for proposals for airport fuel and equipment. Under planning, B2 is, or 2B is consideration of directing community development and engineering staff to advertise for two public hearings to update chapters 54 and 62 of the Code of Ordinances to meet Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA 44 CRF requirements.
Mayor, may I interject? You mentioned about the notice not getting in for that item?
No, it was the, it was item A, I thought, the former Morgan item.
You said B.
You said B, ma'am.
I did, I'm so sorry, okay, my apologies, no, it was the, it was the A item.
Okay.
Okay, I, I, I'm sorry. Okay, consideration of travel for Buddy Sanders to Huntsville, Alabama, to attend a meeting regarding funding sources for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Highway 182 improvements, and that date is listed as the 20th, but it will instead be June the 25th, so it will be Monday instead of tomorrow. Under engineering, we have consideration of authorization to advertise for bids for STP 7101-004, LPA/107116-70100, Louisville Street Multi-Use Path Project from Lynn Lane to Emerson School, in accordance with Mississippi Department of Transportation Local Public Agency Guidelines and Procedures. Under Finance Administration, we have request acceptance of May financial reports, number three, we have consideration of lease renewal with Canon copiers for Human Resource Department, City Clerk's Office, and Park Department. Fire Department, we have consideration of authorization for Coleman Norman to participate in the City of Starkville Educational Assistance Program to take associate-level courses in fire science with a total reimbursement cost not to exceed $1,500 per semester, and to reimburse Sergeant Norman for the approved courses completed in Fall 2017 semester in the amount of $450. Two is request permission to purchase four sets of firefighter turnout gear from NAFCO at a cost of $10,226.28 off state contract to be paid from state rebate funds. We have request permission to renew annual membership to the Wellness Connection in the amount of $8,000. Under Human Resources, we have request authorization to hire Trevon Samuel as a maintenance worker three in the Starkville Utilities Department under the Wastewater Division, we have request authorization to hire Derek Ware as a maintenance worker one for the Utilities Department, number three is request authorization to hire Cole Harris, Wyman Ledlow III, Sawyer Oaks, and Damian Robinson as entry-level police officers for the Starkville Police Department, number four is request authorization to hire Dean Hefner, Hefernan, Logan Miller, Treston Nestle, and Sean Williams as part-time aircraft FBO linemen in the Starkville Airport Department, number five is request authorization to hire Brent Wildman as part-time certified firefighter in the Starkville Fire Department, number six is request authorization to hire Madison Riles as part-time athletic assistant in the Starkville Parks and Recreation Department, seven is request authorization to hire Christopher Giles as an apprentice lineman in the Starkville Utilities Department, number eight is request authorization to hire Jacob Forrester as the assistant manager in the Starkville Utilities Department, and number nine is consideration to approve a temporary pay adjustment for the interim accounting manager for Starkville Utilities in accordance to city policy in the Personnel Manual, Section 2F, pay rates for change in status under temporary promotions. Moving to Utilities Department, we have, number one, consideration of seeking proposals from contractors on replacing water and sewer infrastructure in Pleasant Acres, number two is request authorization for Randall Criswell to travel to Scottsboro, Alabama, to attend lineman apprentice lab three operations on July the 23rd through the 27th, 2018, at a total cost not to exceed $871.53 with advance travel, number three is request authorization for Orlando Smith and Justin Hatcher to travel to Jackson, Tennessee, to attend lineman apprentice lab construction on June the 26th through the 29th, 2018, at a total cost not to exceed $825 each with advance travel, four is request authorization to execute a 2018 Green Power with Providers Amendment with TVA, and number five is request authorization to purchase trailer-mounted vacuum excavator from William Equipment and supply for $70,400 the lower of bids received, and that concludes the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir, my pleasure. Next item under here, we have Mayor's Comments, and I have several things to say, let me go first, what did I forget? See, you thought I made a mess, didn't you? I already done it once. Okay, all right, thank you, Ms. Harden thought I had skipped the minutes, all right, under Mayor's Comments, I have one thing, one thing first, we have an unscheduled introduction, where did he go, Mr. Hughes, our new officer Marvin Hughes, he was, he was not on the agenda, but he has his family here, and so we're not going to make him and his family come back and wait and come to another board meeting, so, Officer Hughes has come to us, he's a Starkville resident, he was a JROTC person, which you can tell by that fine, upright demeanor, he went to Ole Miss, which we'll forgive him for, but he got a BA and a Masters from Ole Miss, and in his spare time, he enjoys theater, and that's like live theater as well as movies, I guess?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we would want to welcome you to the Starkville Police Department, and we are delighted to have you, thank you so much for coming out. Thank you. All right, and I did want to make a clarification, on city services, last week, we approved the country club having fireworks, and I wanted to be very clear that there are no city services for that, our fire department is always on standby for anything that might occur, and we certainly don't have any expectation that the fireworks out of the country club will create a problem, but if so, our fire department is on the ready for, at Station Four, thank you, why I always want to make that one Station Three. And then, I did want to announce, I'm sure everyone's heard that Scott Maynard, our former Alderman from Ward Five, is, was the president, is the president still of Greater Starkville Development Partnership, but he has seized an opportunity down in Florida, Tallahassee, he will be moving, he spent a year as the president of OCDA, and, or executive director of GSDP, which also serves to help OCDA, but he will be having a reception, or they will be having a reception for him on Thursday, June the 28th, from four to six, at the partnership location in the office there, the main lobby there, so, if, you can go tell him, thank him for his service, both to our community, because he has certainly done that, and as an Alderman, and then as the executive director, and certainly as someone who was in the community for a long time, out with the university, so, he is, he will be missed, but we do thank him for his service, so, and that's the end of my comments, do I have any board comments? Vice Mayor, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm going to make these preliminary remarks to get to the highlight of my comments, I want to thank all of our guests here this evening, and I want to particularly thank our distinguished member of the board supervisors who represent District Four, Ms. Brickley Miller for being here, it's always good to recognize a member of a governing body, and she has a rich history of coming before the board all the way back in the 90s, since I became a member of the board in 1993, and doing a great job, and always brought a lot of enthusiasm and passion and great interest with her desire and push for the horse park, so, I always thought it would be a great level of professionalism, whoever that member of the governing body, it's just a matter that we need to reveal with great respect and professionalism, and we just want to thank you, Ms. Honorable Supervisor Brickley Miller, for your presence at our meeting tonight, and we thank you for your service, Mayor Yeo.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor, and I was absolutely going to do that when you came up here, but he beat me to it, and good for him, so, all right, thank you, any other comments from the Board of Aldermen? All right, seeing none, we will move into citizen comments, this is an opportunity for any citizen to come up, you have three minutes to discuss anything with us, or give us your thoughts on any particular subject, so, Mr. Turner, I see you coming forward.
Good evening, to the mayor and board, my name is Avon Turner, Ward Seven.
Good evening, Mr. Turner.
Pretty much, for the family, it'll be two years before July that my brother was shot and killed, and we, I'm gonna leave after my comments, when they found out that he was shot, they wanted to get in trouble with me as soon as possible, they didn't want me to hear from no one else. I was hit by a car 13 years ago on the Louisville Street, hit and run, I broke the mirror, and I didn't know that, those numbers in there can trace back to the individual, but I want to thank you, Ms. Bull, and everyone that hung in there with me, I didn't get no broken within, that just was, he wasn't ready to take me, so. I had a seizure, third pass, it's kind of messed up my day, but I'm about back to full speed, and it comes from a lot of the public asking, the tenants about what they gonna do with y'all, what they gonna do, it brought on a slight seizure, but thank goodness to the paramedics and everything, I was okay, I was able to walk away this time. People, they concerned about the garbage bags, I know that we have had some, but it's up to, we think that about time for some, but anyway, my brother, Andali, was shot with a small handgun, he didn't leave us back then until he heard his mother's voice, but anyway, pretty much for the family, is that we get through this, and we kind of know who was involved, but we want to keep it tight because family was involved, thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. All right, any other citizen comments? Any other citizen comments? All right.
I have one, but nobody else.
I don't see anyone else, Ms. Isaac.
I'm a little slumped today, so, excuse me, but good evening to everybody.
Good evening.
Especially to my squad down there, I have to always use the name now, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Thank you.
Mr. Henry Vaughn will keep me straight sometimes, he tell me you take too long with this, so I have to say what I have to say, get it over with, but I come to y'all this evening again to say, all of you are my aldermen, now, when I left last time, now I left a little early, and I was sort of worried about if we was gonna pay the firemen to go down there and choose something that's not, I mean, you know, not for everybody, 'cause if you gonna have private stuff, you need to have your own private stuff, and I thank the fire chief for the job that he's doing, but I was just like you said, if you gonna have private stuff, have it, and make sure you get a fire engine from somewhere else where you can play, 'cause if I'm not invited, I'll go down there anyway, then I have to have a conversation with my plan over there, but I was just like to say, anything free, I'm invited, this is the city, and I'm invited, and I think y'all need to go back and reconsider some of that stuff that y'all doing, and I still say, bring it back here, you can't agree on it, go ahead and get back here, Mayor, you may make some good choices, you think, but it's not for the public sometimes, okay, and I'm still, I'm still concerned about all this, about these people coming in, and they gonna have their day every time, a year ago by they gonna have a day, that's not right, and I'm gonna keep on pushing it down, and none of you still haven't told me anything about rolling hills on the open back way, I'm not talking about rolling hills of the view, I'm talking about on the back roads where we could have something, 'cause sooner or later, it gonna break down over here like the land of the, on 12, it gonna break down, it's gonna break down, too much over there already, but like I said, consider that in all sort of apartments that they want to move, I still ain't got the bus to come over my way, still ain't got the bus to come over there, I'm not waiting for doing things, and we having somebody pick us up, so I would just like to say, consider, please consider when you go to the public, 'cause it affects me, and I'm gonna think that citizen stuff about everybody else, thank you all for helping us.
Thank you, Ms. Isaac. All right, anyone else, anyone else wishing to make citizen comments? Anyone else? All right, seeing no one, we will move to public appearances, we have a public appearance first by the Starkville Public Library.
Mayor, I don't think the representative is here tonight, I'm the...
You're the representative?
I'm going to be the new liaison, I am the new liaison to the public library, and they normally do not meet in the summer, I had encouraged them to get a public appearance and come and explain to the board the services that they offer, not everybody goes to the library, and so I wanted everybody to be a little more familiar with the services they offer, who uses the library, that sort of thing, I will tell you that it is heavily used, and it's used across a wide section of our community, everything from computers and internet access that people don't have in their homes, to checking out books, the things we think about, they have summer programs for children, they're very active, and they make a big difference in our community, and I apologize that we didn't get that communicated clearly and set up properly with the city clerk, but happy to answer any questions for anybody who has library questions, get you a library card, and go visit.
They have a standing agreement with Sanderson, well, that'd be cool, too, library and workout, read a book and workout, the library out of campus, right?
They can do interlibrary loans, they can, they're part of a wider county group, too, because they're part of the group that also functions out in Sturgis and other, Sturgis I'm familiar with, but other communities.
Okay, any questions from the board, comments from the board regarding the libraries? Okay, all right, thank you, well, now we have the pleasure of Ms. Miller, who is, yes, a supervisor for the county, she is the first female supervisor for Octobahaw County, and we are delighted to have her, because we knew her first as the Horse Park representative, who always gave us a great, great presentation.
Well, thank you, it's an honor to be here, thank you, Mayor, Alderman, always an honor to be in front of you, and such a privilege to be at the Mississippi Horse Park since the year 2000, so I want to share some of the history and some of its successes that every one of us can be proud of. Jim Buck Ross was the former commissioner of agriculture and started a matching grant program, out of that program, there were 72 publicly funded arenas approved in the state of Mississippi, the state allocated money for these facilities, the municipalities or the counties matched them, and they took over the operations of the facilities, Mississippi now leads the nation in state-of-the-art equine facilities per capita, the four largest in the state are in Jackson, Tunica, Hattiesburg, and Starkville, and this truly changed the scope of the equine industry in Mississippi, in return, equine activities are not a hobby anymore, they're investment, because people have access to facilities year-round, we were built at the same time, but we were built as a unique partnership on bond money, the partnership was Mississippi State University, the City of Starkville, and Octobahaw County, and according to the National League of Agri-Center Managers, no facility in the state, in the country, is self-sufficient. If you look at the operating budget in 1999, and then you look at the operating budget in 2009 and 2018, you can see the structure has changed, compared to smaller facilities in the area, their operational budgets are half a million dollars a year, so if you look at the horse parks, you can actually see that we're doing more for less, budgets are tight, and the shortfall in revenue this year will be covered by funds that were originally saved for improvements. In the last slide, you saw budget changes, but now you see the event growth, if you look across the top bar, the GSDP, CVB grant is so important to help establish new events and entice outside promoters to use our facility, a great example of this is the Lucky Dog Barrel Race that we established several years ago, those promoters are from Arkansas, in 2018, this four-day event had 2,000 entries from 12 states and paid out $80,000, they contracted two events with us this year, and will come back again in November, Starkville Daily News reported today that tourism was high in April, and we know that events like the Lucky Dog Barrel Race in April and other at the Horse Park pay a vital role in that. This week, we're also excited to say that we got a letter from the NVA, the first time that we've ever applied for a grant, and so we were approved for a small grant that will be used to start another event at the Horse Park. According to Visit Mississippi, in 2017, visitors spent over $6 billion while visiting Mississippi, which is the second highest recorded amount in the history of Mississippi, Mississippi also ranks in the top five in the United States in attracting large equine events. In the beginning, the Mississippi Horse Park, we actually contracted to outside promoters to produce, but to help with supplement budgets, the Horse Park now produces some of the events in-house, several years ago, if you remember, we started the Horse Paw Barrel Race, which is now established and has sold out the facility and the surrounding barns for many years. Part of the reason why this event is so successful is because we've changed it and grown it and developed it to help attract contestants from all over the country to our community for five days, we're excited this year to partner with the WBRL out of North Carolina to produce the first no-bull grand slam in Mississippi, this event with 500 entries will pay out $125,000 for the weekend, that will attract people from all over the country to stay in our community, other events that we helped produce are the AQHA Show, the Red, White, and Blue on Memorial Weekend, and our newest events, or we have in our Thursday Night Summer Series, we had our first Thursday night event a week ago, and it attracted over 100 contestants from as far away as Meridian and Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Anytime that you have somebody come into your community from 90 miles away or further, that's considered new dollars into your community. Now that Hill State Boulevard is open, we have even more people to create a positive first impression with, we have been parking RVs for several years and developed relationships with not only annual Mississippi State fans, but the opposing teams as well, we have been told by many RV guests that our facility is the best in the country, with only five people on the staff, it never gets old hearing your hard work is paying off, we love getting to share the great places to eat and shop with our guests, the majority of them take advantage of staying on our grounds Thursday through Sunday, and truly get to experience the amenities that our great college town has to offer. One of the most unique aspects, though, of the Mississippi Horse Park is the diversity of our events, you don't have to be a horse person to come and enjoy the facility, with 100 events in 2017, you got to choose from things like a With a hundred events in two thousand and seventeen, you got to choose from things like a dog show, concerts, garden expo, haunted horse park, farm-tastic therapeutic riding programs, circus, and the Baptist State Union Square dance. All of these combined generated an economic impact of over two million dollars and brought over forty thousand people through the gates. And here's a little bit of what you got to see. It's also nice to hear what others are saying about you, whether it's across the country or here locally. If you notice right there on the left-hand side of the screen, that's where the Rotary Classic Rodeo was featured on the PRCA website. That's the national website for the Professional Cowboys Association. They highlighted how valued that event is in our community. The Rotary Rodeo is produced by the Starkville Rotary Club and has become a tradition and is now officially known, as you know, as the rodeo. This annual favorite event for families of all ages, they don't wanna miss it. And if you made it to this year's event through the cold and stormy weather, you can attest to that because there wasn't an empty seat in the house. The Rotary Club also, Rotary Rodeo for the Rotary Club is also the largest fundraiser with benefits for um proceeds going to our community. And I just want to close by saying that we have been a successful partnership. And it's because of the, the partnership. It is because everybody has been willing to give and it's something that everybody can truly be appreciative of and proud of. And I'm, I'm just glad to stand in front of you and say that I've helped to be a part of that, or I hope I have um for all these years. And we appreciate the partnership between Mississippi State University, the city of Starkville, and Octobah County. Thank you.
Thank you. Was it one of those pictures, you going around that barrel?
That wasn't me.
It was you, okay, all right, well, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
It's nice to get an update on that, cause it's a wonderful facility, so.
Thank you.
All right. All right, we have our first public hearing, or, well, we have a public hearing. There's a second public hearing discussion on the residential parking requirements and we've made some updates to it. And I'm let uh Mr. Havlin, Ms. Corbin provide us that update.
This version of the ordinance change is a draft two. Items from the first public hearing on June fifth have been added to this draft. This includes language about RV and boat storage, removal of trees, and short-term living during holidays. A public hearing was also held on June twelfth with the Planning and Zoning Commission. At this hearing, the commission suggested clarification on the enforcement policy. The enforcement of this ordinance uh will be done through the code enforcement department, just like any other code violation. The enforcement of parking violations on streets would still be handled by the police department. The uh two sections of the current ordinance that are being proposed to be changed are Sections A and Sections B. Section A is in need of an update due to references of C-three zoning, which is no longer in use, replaced by the T districts. And an additional requirement for drive aisle dimensions is also being proposed. Section B of the ordinance regulates the number of required spaces for residential. This regulation uses square footage of the structure to determine the required spaces. The problem with this is that if a residential property turns into rental, it doesn't address the amount of renters in the space. Per bedroom. The proposed changes to Section A uh with updated language that adds, that mentions the T district and also adds the requirements for the drive aisles. For Section B, the required number of spaces for off-street parking requirements, the storage of recreational vehicles and equipment, exceptions to the requirements, and the variance process. Section one would only apply to new construction. Existing structures would not have to add parking spaces based on bedrooms, but would have to meet all other requirements. Requirements such as parking in the grass and the storage of RV and equipment. The numbers of required spaces is determined by the number of bedrooms. For single-family and duplex houses, one space per bedroom. For multi-family of three units or more, one and a quarter space per bedroom. All parking shall be on hard surface and is not permitted in the lawn area of the front yard. Hard surface shall be defined as concrete, asphalt, gravel, or pavement. Driveways be limited to a twenty-foot width at the street. This requirement is intended to prevent property owners from paving the entire front yard in for safety. The last requirement in this section is that all drive, gravel driveways will have a concrete apron. And this is to help keep the loose gravel from getting out into the street. Recreation vehicles and equipment are also addressed as part of this proposal. The storage of boats, campers, utility trailers, et cetera, in the front yard and or driveway of existing residential property causes displacement of vehicles for daily use. This compounds the issue of parking in the lawn area of the front yard, which has a negative impact on property values of the neighborhood. RV and equipment that are proposed to be stored in the side or rear yard. The exception to this that was brought up in the first public hearing uh that we've shown in here is that physical constraints might make it unfeasible or impossible to park an RV or a boat in the side yard area. The physical constraints are defined as existing trees, excessive grades, limited side yard width, HVAC equipment, and existing utilities. The parking of RV and equipments is prohibited in the street for a period of time exceeding twelve hours. This is so that you can load and unload your boat RV. RVs cannot be used as permanent living quarters, but can be used as short-term sleeping quarters for a maximum of three nights for MSU home game weekends and city-recognized holidays. That would be Christmas, Easter, and so on. And then one even additional change from the draft that was presented to you, uh, once I got back and we got the comments from P and Z, this is stuff that sort of came afterwards, is taking the E and the F and combining them back into one and just changing some of the language, adding boats instead of equipment. So it's just the RVs, the motorhomes and the boats can be put in the front side yard. And then adding the definition of physical constraints to that section and then moving the removal of trees kind of statement from E into, or F into E. It's just kind of cleaning it up and then adding the definition. Proposed exceptions to the proposed ordinance address private events, home game weekends, and construction activities. For private events, parking shall be permitted in the lawn area of the front yard for a maximum of twelve hours. Parking is also permitted in the front yard during home game weekends for residents to accommodate out-of-town guests. Utility trailers and storage containers are permitted in the front yard of any residential property with an active building permit. In an attempt to not overly burden residents that cannot physically comply with the requirements of the ordinance, the variance process is clearly listed as part of this ordinance. And to reduce the number of requests that are considered minor, the planning department will have the discretion to approve any deviation of ten percent or less. All other variance requests will be processed through the existing variance process, Board of Adjustments and Appeals, and then the Board of Alder. As for the impact, the impacts of the proposed ordinance can be divided into two categories, new construction and existing. For new construction, the additional parking for each bedroom should prevent the need for parking in the lawn area of the front yard. Additional space for RV and equipments can be planned at the beginning of the project. For existing constructions, parking in a lawn area and storage of RV equipment in the front yard will need to end. In most cases, it will just be a simple rearrangement of where the residents currently park. In some cases, additional hard surface park will need to be added for parking on-site if desired. And the illustrations that are up now is kind of just showing how you could come into compliance with different scenarios. Obviously, it's not every possible scenario. Um, for the notifications, if we proceed with this, uh, one, one possible way to do would be place a copy of the text of the ordinance and supporting graphics in the utility bills that are circulated. Place several ads in the paper explaining the requirements, the use of social media to get the word out about the requirements. Placing posters with information about the ordinance and supporting graphics at local businesses, grocery stores, uh, service stations, convenience stores. Meet with various community leaders and civic groups, professional organizations about the ordinance. They could then help explain the ordinance to their community. This can be done with church groups, realtor associations, things of that nature. Once the ordinance has been adopted, a policy for code enforcement could be implemented for dealing with the ordinance for a specific period of time. Just one example would be to have a one-year grace period. During the first year, the property owners and tenants will be notified of violation with a warning. The warning would be issued with information packet explaining the ordinance and graphically illustrating what can and can't be done. Community development staff members will be trained as to the specifics of the requirements of the ordinance to provide assistance to the residents that may come with questions. After the one-year period expires, all properties that have not been granted a variance will need to become compliant. The penalty for non-compliance will need to be established so that it be clearly communicated to the public during this warning period. If there are any questions?
Any questions from the board members? Any questions, comments from the board members? All in the order?
Uh, yes, I had, it looks like two. In the revised ordinance under um number three here, recreational vehicles and equipment, the added section E under recreational vehicles and equipment shall be allowed in the front yard. If the applicant demonstrates that item, cannot be located in the side, rear, or garage. When we talk, and I'm, I'm just clarifying, you know, when we had the discussion during the last public hearing, my understanding, and I might have my vocabulary wrong, and there might be another reason, that's fine, was that we had discussed having it on a hard surface rather than the front yard. Could you explain?
Yeah, that's kind of what this, the draft, kind of jumping ahead to draft three for ENF, uh, was to take the equipment off and add boats, but the hard surface was not addressed as part of that, but it can be added in there to this section.
Well, what I'm saying is instead of the front yard, my understanding was.
Just a hard surface?
Just the hard surface. So basically saying, if you've got a recreational vehicle, the thought process was there, you know, obviously you can't fit it in your side yard if it's on wheels. Or whatever the case might be, it could be on a hard surface. And correct me if I'm, and, and feel to jump in it.
Just to be clear, I mean, you know, these are extreme examples, just kind of randomly picked off the internet, not in Starkville. But the image on the top right, I mean, technically, if that were just, if they just put a concrete pad across the entire front of their house, they could be compliant with that. Um, the way that we were suggesting the writing was it could be in the front yard, just to the side, not in the center. And we're not really putting any dimensional requirements on what the side is.
Okay, so.
But we can go either way.
The reason I'm asking the question, and, and, and you can probably explain this to me better, Daniel, is I'm asking the question because of picture number two there, right?
Hmm.
So I want to make sure that the idea isn't, hey, you put it in your front yard, but, you know, we're not gonna put an RV right in front of our front door. Does that make sense?
Yes.
So is there something in here that, that's gonna dictate how we address what the front yard is and where it can be placed?
If they can't get, if they can't place in the side yard, where it should be in the front yard, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it's.
Right.
Right there on the rewritten version.
I, I can do the front yard, I'm fine with that, I'm just talking about, yeah, we're in the front yard. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and that's what's on this one, uh, in the side yard or on the side of the front yard.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
If you want us to be more specific on that, we can.
No, I just wanted it explained. So you're saying that that's, that is addressed on.
Yeah, it's that first red, or second red section.
Shall be allowed on the side of the front yard if applicants, I see. Okay, thank you. And then, what was my second question? My second question is on procedurally, how are we going to measure the three events? Um, I know Buddy and I had talked about that. There was some discussion about using the software. Is that something we're gonna see? Um, or is that just gonna be something administratively that we're gonna handle?
I think for the three events, it's gonna really have to be complaint-driven. You know, if somebody is consistently having, you know, a renter is consistently having parties at a house every single weekend and they begin to, you know, make complaints to code enforcement or the police and we document that they've exceeded three events, then it can be addressed that way. Um, otherwise, we're asking people to register their parties before the event, which would be pretty difficult or challenging.
That was the pro con. And I mean, the two other ordinances in the state, they did register, they did have that.
Right.
Sure. If that was something.
One was Oxford, correct?
Yeah.
We could maybe reach out to them and see how.
Well, they did it. So the city of Oxford does it through the city clerk's office, which I don't think that's appropriate. And our, I don't think it would be appropriate to have to go through the city clerk's office because it would be something to go through community development.
It's a pro con to burden citizens, people to actually have to come in before, that was kind of discussed.
Right, it's a complaint-driven. So even if it's gonna be complaint-driven, do we know what that's going to look like? How, how, how is community development going to handle the complaint-driven? Or is it gonna have to be timestamped? Are we gonna have a way to keep up with that specific address? Because this goes back to the idea of what we've talked about in terms of, yeah, you've got a neighborhood and uh you might have uh, uh, an absent property owner next door where, where there's folks that are having a party every single night. That was the intent of the three events and they're parking in the yard and, and all the disrupt, being disruptive in a neighborhood. I mean, how are we gonna, how are we gonna address that? It's just my question.
All complaints, all code enforcement complaints come in uh with an address.
Right.
If, if someone doesn't provide us an address, we're gonna ask them for an address because the code enforcement officer is likely to know where to go.
Okay.
And everything that we do as far as code enforcement is based upon a parcel or an address. So that address and that parcel number is logged into our software. So when a community development employee either pulls up a record or goes out into the field to do investigation, they're gonna see where that complaint has taken place in the history of maybe someone being a continual offender. And, and so, so at the point when you've reached the educational period.
Right.
A letter has been sent out, but then it's generally traditionally been terminated before.
And the citizen, so a citizen can take that picture though and send it in to y'all and y'all can document it and that, just to make sure.
Online, or they can come in in person.
And that can't be written procedurally unless, that's something that we've discussed, whether or not the section where we had these code, you know, enforcement sections, whether or not to write explicitly, explicitly what the process is to, to write a code complaint. Like, do you need a time-set picture?
Right.
We have discussed that, I think, at length, and we, we had kind of sided with more procedural, but if you feel like it needs to be written into the code, or if y'all feel like it needs to be.
I just think that we need to make it clear to the citizens what the process is for what the procedure is. So if we want to include that in our educational material when it goes out about, hey, this is how you can, you know, make a report on it, this is the procedure for it, for the three events, that part is what's important, so.
I think like Buddy was mentioning, if, if a neighbor does make a complaint about somebody parking in the yard, once that hits the code enforcement officer's database, they can then go out there and speak with the current resident of the house and just let them know that, you know, they see this complaint, you got, you know, a few more times in a calendar year.
That's fine.
To explain it, kind of add an additional layer to it.
I think it works, I'm fine with it. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the board? Alderman's is struck.
I have one. Um, in, in section three where we're talking about RVs, um, it says RVs. In section three, where we're talking about RVs, it says, RVs cannot be used as a dwelling. I know that I have some areas in my ward that are zoned for mobile homes, and that there are people who park RVs in a mobile home pad, and they do live there. I don't think the intent of the ordinance is to impact those people.
I believe that's currently not allowed.
But RV parks, like in RV parks.
Oh.
RV, no, but RV-
Y'all might want to go out and drive around a little bit if it's not-
Well, I mean, there are RVs that are parked, of course, behind where smaller trucks are. I don't know.
It wasn't approved.
As far as, like, mobile home parks, I do not know. It would have to be investigated.
A mobile home is, I think, in the definition of what it is. It excludes recreational vehicles.
That would certainly be investigated.
That's something I would appreciate, because I know, and I can give you more specific details in a bit, but I know that there are mobile home parks in my ward where there are people who rent a space, and they, I presume, they rent it and they live there, so otherwise, it's storage, so.
And when does an RV become a trailer or vice versa?
It's in the definitions section.
It's kind of like a tiny house, tiny trailer.
Alderman Sistrung, you- Just to clarify, Alderman Sistrung, and I'll yield to you, in another sense, you're asking the question to make sure that it doesn't conflict with our other zoning ordinances, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Thanks, just wanted to clarify.
Some of these older structures and older development, this order's not going, it's not going to accommodate some of the people. Just say, you got some of the older houses, where you got three people living in the house, and you got one driveway, but you got three, three people driving cars. Some cars might be parked somewhere. So the older development in these, it's just not going to accommodate them. So they're going to be getting tickets all the time.
Are you saying that they don't have much front yard?
Right.
Not a front yard to use as a-
And then, some of them have to use front yard because they don't have enough areas to be parked in it. So, and some of the areas, it's not, it's not going to be, it won't accommodate them, it's going, it's going to keep them in hardship.
All right, thank you. All right, unless there are no more, any more comments, I'm going to open it up as a public hearing.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot, Alderman, I'm sorry. Now, Mr. Latimer?
Daniel Amley, I saw three things for potential consideration and for the board's consideration. The first one is just a typo in section B, 1A, where it says, "shall be calculate," it probably needs to say, "shall be calculated." So just put a D on "calculated." The next thing I saw in the RV section, section 3D, where it says, "with a calendar year as well as during city-recognized holidays, including Easter, Thanksgiving, and Christmas." I thought that perhaps raised an issue of ambiguity as far as, are those the only holidays, or do all city holidays count? And so perhaps a real clear, bright line would be a period after holidays. So it says, "during city-recognized holidays." Those holidays are put forth every year on the minutes, and so there's no argument that all of those holidays would apply. And then, lastly, on section 4B, where you got home game weekends, just whether that was the intent of only football weekends, or did that extend to other sports?
The intent was extend to other sports.
Should we judge all?
That's up to the board how, how they want to, but I mean, you know, there's a lot of sports at Mississippi State, so.
My goodness.
But, you know, if somebody's coming to see their grandkids play, and they're staying at their other child's house, and they're bringing the RV, and their grandkid plays soccer, you know, we didn't want to exclude them as any more football players.
Okay, all right, thank you. Well, that'd be some language we may want to brush up on and be a little, a little clearer. Okay, so anyone else before I open it as a public hearing? Okay, we'll open it as a public hearing, this will be the second public hearing on this. We'll, there are, is an opportunity, we'll have 15 minutes for pros and cons, and we'll start with the pros. If anyone wishes to speak in favor of this ordinance, now would be your time to do so. So, anyone wishing to speak in favor of the ordinance? All right, seeing none, if anyone wishes to speak against the ordinance. Would you like to come forward? If you would identify yourself, please, sir?
Chris Taylor, 17. I agree with Alderman Vaughn, you know, because there's some older structure, older homes, that people does not have the driveways. Now, what I didn't hear was, how about reunion, family reunion during the summertime? These people have small homes, and people cannot park nowhere else, except on the grass and stuff. So thinking about reunions, funerals, I might have to come to town three days or four days early. So you telling me I can only park one day or so many hours? That's wrong. And also, graduations, we're not thinking about that. You know, I think that once you open this can of worms with residential parking and everything else, it really could hurt some of the older folks. Now, for the new construction, I agree with you, it might be needed for the new constructions. But when you look at these parking places, a half a lot, when I say a half a lot, I'm talking about a quarter of an acre, or half an acre, they putting up four and five little hut, huts up in there, and you talking about saving the city money? You're going to have to hire some more people to enforce this ordinance. And I don't really think too much of your thought been put into this. I agree with you, y'all put, y'all did lots of work on it, but the way it written now, I disagree with it 100% until I get it straight.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Toman. Anyone else wish to speak on this ordinance? Who's going to speak against this ordinance? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, I will close it as a public hearing. Further discussion from the board? Anything? Okay, all right, thank you. All right, we will move onto, under Mayor's business, and we have, we have discussion and consideration of setting a recess board meeting for the purpose of interviewing candidates for the vacant position of Director of Parks and Rec. We have four applicants who have been identified as meeting the criteria and being good applicants for our position that's vacant. We appreciate Mr. Logan, having been, having served as, and continuing to serve his interim, but it has gone on for a while, and I believe it's time for us to take a look at our opportunity of the applicants who have applied. Mr. Logan is one of them. But I wanted to see about setting a date for that, and I had, have about three of them listed here, and it's going to depend on whether or not everyone has got your calendars out to look, perhaps. I have, July, June the 29th is the earliest because of MML, and that's a, that's a Friday. We can do, that's, you know, we can do it as a part of a work session, or during the work session timeline, which is the noon. Other than that, we might have July the 2nd or July the 5th. And any of those, if anyone wants to, say, rule one of those out, certainly can do that.
May I recognize?
Give me, just a second, Vice Mayor, let me, let me finish up my thought process here. And the other thing to know as a, as a part of this, is that we have, three of the four candidates are from out of town. And so that makes it problematic for them to be here, and I had thought that we might take advantage of the beauty of technology and Skype the first interview, because I would expect us to have more than one interview with these folks as we, as we talk, talk with them. So I realize that is kind of unique, but I thought it might be worth us considering as we look at dates and opportunities, because I think it is a hardship. If we're going to have more than one interview for these folks, then them coming from out of town more than once, I think, is probably not as, not as convenient for them, and it is costly unless we're going to pay for it. So, all right, thoughts, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, for the recognition for the floor. First of all, Mayor, this matters, in my opinion, is too important to be considered and discussed in a work session. The matter of interviewing, discussing, selecting, and hiring a department head should be done in our official boardroom. It needs to be done at a place and time when members of the public have a very adequate, ample, and sufficient opportunity to be present and hear the particulars of this process. There is no reason, in my opinion, for this matter to be rushed to be interviewed. I'm not available at any time for the rest of this month to be coming in on a Friday, much less any other day. Personally, if any person is going to, in my opinion, be brought in as a department head, I would like the citizens board be consistent, as we have done, as I can recall it throughout the years that I have been on this board, and let's just bring them live here before this board. Now, it is up to the applicant, and not the mayor, the vice mayor, and the board, to decide what is in hardship to the applicant. If the applicant is, lives in New York, or Seattle, Washington, or Denver, Colorado, or as some other extreme end of the United States, then that is that applicant's duty and responsibility to get before this board. It is not the duty of this governing body to arrange and get them here. We can make that a requirement, I'm not interested in seeing, you know, a photograph of somebody over some TV screen or some type of monitor, unless this board already has this man made up, who it, who it plans to hire for this position. But what I would suggest is that we get, have this interview process at a time, at a 5:30 session, preferably after the next meeting. I'm available, the next, the meeting on July the 3rd. The 4th is on a Wednesday, you know, I'm available anytime that week or the next week. So this is a very important matter, there's no need to rush on it. I think we need to have all the applicants here. There's no need to bring applicant here, you know, put him on the screen. I want to get him here, I want to be able to have a full and complete assessment on it, because given the history of this city, you know, when the department head gets here, he's here. So I think that we need to just get all of the applicants here, and the applicant say, well, you know, since I live in New York or Washington DC, it's just too far for me to travel here. Well, this applicant is voluntarily withdrawing, that maybe, that may eliminate some applicants. They don't, if they're not interested, they have an idea, can do some research with this job pays, and they're not interested in coming to Mississippi, then maybe, you know, that's, that will be less and fewer people to consider. So I think that's what we need to do, and, you know, and just interviewing somebody of this magnitude for this position at a work session, it just, you know, regardless of what some may think about a work session, you know, we don't need to be interviewing such, and I don't have no problem doing it at a non-board meeting, but we don't need to be having this high-level position being interviewed at a work session. You have many people who want to come to work session, we don't even, well, I won't say we, the, the presiding officer, I'll just be specific, the presiding officer and the board, because at the board meeting, does not even, I know in the past, has, has not allowed comments at a work session. So we need to have this here, and this is setting, this is official, air official in this boardroom here. We need to do it at an evening, when everybody can get here, the public, maybe 5:30, like the mayor said, the MML goes, those who are going will leave Sunday or thereabout, that going to last, so that this week is out, in my opinion, then they come back next Wednesday or Thursday or whenever, then, you know, and I, and I just have things already scheduled for next week, and then that puts us into the first of the, of the month. So we're going to meet that Tuesday, and I don't think it would be practical to do it that Tuesday. We've done it in some years in the past, but I'm not going to push that on this board, but, you know, I think it's reasonable just to do it at a separate meeting. So I like the idea, maybe July the 5th or thereafter, in this boardroom at 5:30, so the public can come in here, you know, there's a lot of emphasis on parks. The public needs to see and hear all the applicants, the public may wants to give some comments before the interviews. So this is an open process, this is a democratic process. Now, and I'm not in favor of bringing somebody in on the screen, now, you put, bring somebody on the screen, that's going to suggest to me that this, that this method of hiring is already predetermined. So I think we need to get everybody here, if they can't get here, then they need to withdraw, it's just simple as that. I mean, if I apply for a job in New York City or Washington DC, I'm a member of the bar in DC, but I go up there and apply for a job, and they say, "Mr. Perkins, you got to come here?" I say, "Well, it's a hardship, I just withdraw." It's just simple as that. I mean, look, we didn't ask these people to apply for the job. I mean, they, they voluntarily, willingly, and freely asked to come to Starkville, Mississippi. We didn't send for them. It's just like the judge say in court when they do sentencing of these defendants, "I didn't send for you, you found your way up here." So, you know, so that's what one of our circuit judges, honorable judges say, and that's the truth. We didn't send for these people. They asked to come here, so if they want to come, then they need to find their way, they don't know how to get to Starkville, there's a lot of ways. We just tell them the home of Mississippi State, the, maybe the home of the next championship team, about baseball team, just to, maybe they can get here quicker, we tell them that. You know, they, they'll find a way, just tell them the same place where this team that's winning these ballgames are from Mississippi State. I mean, that's where we're located. If they don't know that, now they know. They tune in on Friday night, they'll know how to get to Starkville. So, but I think they need to come here, and if they don't want to come here, just withdraw, just simple, no love lost. I mean, we didn't, we didn't ask them to apply anyway, but, you know, we appreciate them, we, we'll hear them out. So, but Mayor, I just want to sell those things, hopefully, just, didn't want to just waste any time, but I felt all the things were just constructive, so we can go through this process, so I don't have anything else to say about this tonight, so I yield, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Alderman.
Mayor, I will say, in hearing Vice Mayor's comments, I did, I do find them constructive, and I do think it's important, in listening to his comments, that we do have it at a regular scheduled board meeting. I think, I, I don't see any difference in having it on July 3rd. My understanding about the, in terms of having it on the screen, is that we were, are we, are we treating this almost like an elimination process, to trying to narrow down our two, I don't know, maybe three candidates to invite to come here in person at that point?
May I respond to that?
Yes.
That was my thought process, is that we would look at the top four, we had five, top five, one was Drew, that we would look at the top four, and via this methodology, and then if we wanted to invite the others back before we ever made another decision, we would have an in-person interview for the ones that we felt were appropriate and fit what we had in mind. So yes, that was the intention.
So, so, two points there. One, I don't have any issue with the Skype interview, as an initial phase of the interview process, and then, of course, when we have, you know, our two or three candidates, yes, of course, we expect that they be here in person. The second part of that is, I agree with the Vice Mayor in that, I don't see any reason why we can't do that and hear on July 3rd and, and make sure, because it is a very important position, and then we are putting a lot of emphasis on parks, that we can make sure that all seven of us can be here and are included and are part of that process, so. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay, any further, any other thoughts?
Mayor.
Alderman.
July the 3rd is what, as a regular board meeting? Let's stay away from a regular board meeting, just like the Vice Mayor said, I would rather do it away from a regular board meeting, it's take too, that's too much time. It's very time-consuming, we already got a regular board meeting scheduled, and then we're going to do, we're going to do interviews, that, that's take too much time. I don't want to be at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock, to, with no interviews. And then, and I agree with Vice Mayor again, if you're looking for a job, you need to be present. You need to be present. You don't, you don't need to be on the highway in New York, and I need to have an interview, and I got to stay. A lot of times, you can look at a person's appearance and tell, look at their appearance and tell whether they fit for that job or not, but I can't, I can't determine what it, if I see him on screen. I would rather for them to be here, that's what, for I would make my decision, by looking at you, and listening at you, and looking at your movement. That's what I would rather do than by, by doing that. So if I, if anyone else is going to look for a job, you're going to be present.
Okay. Alderman.
Mayor, I move that we have in-person interviews on July the 16th at 5:00 to interview the four final candidates. After interviewing on the, July the 16th, perhaps at our regularly scheduled meeting on the 17th, we can make a decision about who we'd like to hire.
The 16th, what day?
It's a Monday.
Monday. Okay, I have a motion from Alderman Walker, that we interview on July the 16th for the candidates for the park position, and that was an in-person interview at 5:30? Is that, was that the time?
Whatever time we feel is appropriate. I said five, but if we, if we want to say, set a different time, so whenever the most people can be here to comment about the parks, potential parks director, whenever time we feel is the best time.
In this boardroom?
Sure, wherever y'all want to do it.
Okay, so I have the 16th at 5:00 in this boardroom to interview the four, do we have an agreement on the four candidates? I believe everyone received an application, those applications? Oh, okay, we have court in here- Oh, okay. We have court in here on Mondays at 6:00. So that is, is not, um, that's not com- compatible, excuse me, compatible with that. So, uh, we'll have to either change the date or change the location.
Mayor, what time does court start on Monday?
6:00.
I mean, um.
That's insufficient time.
Well, we can start, well, we can start earlier. Uh, how, how much, we got four applicants?
Yes, sir.
Cause we need to come in, in this boardroom. I mean, this is our boardroom. They just can wait. Uh, maybe we start about, if, if everybody can get here, I'll make, my schedule work, maybe about, uh, we got four applicants, maybe about four, about 3:30. So we can be out of here about 3:30 or 4:00, if everybody can get here at that time.
We have court from 2:00 to 4:00? And then they break until?
Well, well, we'll come here at 4:00 and they can break till we get finished. We'll be here 4:00. I mean, cause we'll be at, Mr. Turner, with four interviews, we'll be out here at 6:00.
All right.
4:00.
We're assuming all four's gonna come, they may not.
Sir?
All four may not come.
Well, whoever comes, we just start at 4:00.
Okay.
Here.
Standby. Let me, let's, we have a motion on the floor. Let, I don't have a second. So Mr. Mr. Walker, do you want to amend? Well, let me, let him amend his motion first. Do you want to amend your motion, Mr. Walker? To reflect, um?
Uh, yes, based on the, the potential conflicts that we have, can either do it at 4:00 or we can do it upstairs. I don't have a preference.
Yeah.
Uh, let him make his motion. 6, uh, if you've got a motion, let's.
Let's say, I think 4:00 is, if we're only talking two hours, that's, that's pretty quick. That's a, that's, you know, you're, you're talking 20 minutes of interview, a little bit of time to change. If this is such an important position, we want to really flesh this out. Um, that's, that's a pretty quick interview. I would say if we're gonna be doing, uh, uh, making a decision of this type, my experience has been it's not uncommon to have multiple interviews, one being via Skype, although that's been something that we've clearly, uh, have a, an, an issue with. And so I think perhaps it would be better to pick a, a different date where we can allow a little bit more time, uh, in person to be able to do that. Um, I can be flexible with my schedule. And so, uh, I, I do believe that the week of July the 4th would be a, is not a good week, other than the, the board meeting day. Um, whether it's gonna be that, when does court not in session in this facility?
Um, it's in session on Mondays and Wednesdays and Thursdays.
What time is it in session on Wednesdays?
Uh, 2:00, 2:00 to 4:00.
So, uh, what about Wednesday then? Um, at 5:00 or 5:30?
Alderman Walker, would you like to amend to Wednesday, the 18th at 5:30?
I'm fine with that. Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion for, uh, interview at, on the 18th at 5:30 in this courtroom? July the 18th?
I, I think that date may not work for folks. Uh, Alderman Little for sure said he's out of town. Uh, what about the next week? Are people in town the, the week of the 23rd through the 27th? Or the week of the 9th through the 13th?
Okay. Do we have, do we have anyone who could be available on the week of, the second week in July, which would be the 9th through the 13th? Anyone out of town?
I'm here.
Anyone, anyone out of town? Okay. So everybody's here.
I won't be out of town till the 3rd weekend. I'll be going the 3rd weekend of July.
Okay. But how about the 10th?
Wednesday, the 10th.
10th is a Tuesday.
Tu- Tuesday.
I can go.
Tuesday, the 10th.
Okay. That, well, P and Z is, but if we meet, they meet at 5:30. If we meet earlier, if we meet at, say, 3:00, two and a half hours? Okay. So if we meet at 3:00 on the 10th, which is a Tuesday, all right, do I have a motion to that effect?
So moved, Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion from Alderman Walker for a meeting at the 10th, uh, on, which is a Tuesday in this courtroom at, um, 3:00? Okay.
I'm putting it in right now.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second from Alderman Little. All right. Any further discussion? Alderman Wa- uh, I'm sorry, Alderman Carver, are you still with us?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you available the week of, the second week in July? Are you in town the second week of July on that Tuesday?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Fine. All right. Then in that case, we have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Uh, if you would, I'm sorry.
I just want to be clear, this is in-person interviews, right?
That, that's what Alderman Walker had, that was his motion.
I just want to be clear for vote. Thank you, Mayor.
Um, any further discussion? Okay. If you would answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Alderman, uh, Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Okay. By, uh, vote of seven to nothing, it, the motion passes. And I gotta say, I'm ready for us to go to technology. I think that Skyping was a great idea. So, all right. I'm, I'm defeated. Thank you. Uh, all right. Um, second item on the agenda is the, uh, second item, um, that, that needs board action is the consideration of.
Mayor move approval.
Okay. Thank you. It's a million dollars, guys. And we have a 75-25 match and I was pretty stoked about it. So I have a motion and a second. Motion from Alderman Walker, second from Alderman Miller. Any further discussion or any questions about it? Okay. All those in favor, please, uh, answer as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Yea.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
All right. Uh, seven, seven to no, to nothing, the vote carries, the motion carries. All right. We have board business. Um, this is a consideration contract with Dalhough Thomas for an athletic complex master plan at Cornerstone Park. And this is to continue our efforts to create that sports tournament facility that we have been talking about and that hopefully we will bring to fruition in the next 18 to 24 months. So do I have?
Some moved.
I have a motion from Alderman Sistrum of a second. Second from Alderman Little, Alderman Little. Uh, any discussion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Uh, Alderman Miller.
Uh, my question is, in, in, in reading through that, it referenced, uh, plans for McKee Park. Do we know to what extent those plans will look like?
Uh, well.
Just, I'm just curious.
Yeah. The, the, the master plan showed McKee Park becoming a passive, more passive park with like a small lake and, uh, activities, dog park or whatever things. Uh, and moving all the active sports to the current sportsplex area. And now adding Cornerstone Park into that mix of active.
Would there be, was, I guess, and that master plan included revision to the basketball court over there on McKee Park, correct? They weren't gonna like eliminate the basketball court?
No, that, no, it was continued in that fact. Actually, oh, I'm sorry.
I just can't recall.
Alderman Walker can answer your question better than I, but my recollection is basketball was there as, and including a skate park, I think was, uh, added to the mix as well. Alderman Walker?
Yeah. I think that whether or not the basketball court is going to ultimately stay at McKee or not, I would, I would say what's written in here, it says master plan at Cornerstone Park. If you look at the contract, it is that, but it is also the, uh, renovations and update of the sportsplex. Uh, I think as part of this, there's likely going to be that the, the basketball court could potentially move to the sportsplex. It may stay at McKee. And we're really gonna, I think, uh, everybody be involved, but that's gonna be where the consultants are going to make some recommendations that we can either approve or, or not approve and help give them some direction for what we think needs to happen.
And if I may, Mayor, I just think, I think the reason I bring it up is, um, I just, I think that's so important, um, for me personally. Um, just because basketball is such an easy thing for our use, it's a free thing to do. Um, it's an easy thing for them to do, to just go up, out there, pick up a basketball and, and shoot around on the court and to make sure that we have those in good condition. Um, it's something that is a, it's a diverse sport and something that everybody can get out and play and it's, it's free. And so, um, and same with the, the skate park too. If we can get something like that as well, I think it's, I think all those are important because what happens at the sportsplex is if there's an event going on or it's just jam-packed in there, those guys that want to play basketball there, uh, I realize we're not gonna put 10 more indoor facilities in for basketball. But if those guys want to go play basketball, I don't want them to go do something else. I want them to go still play basketball. So, um, of course, if it's raining or not, but if there's an event in there or something like that, I want to make sure that we're moving towards that throughout the city. That's why I asked the question. So I appreciate the feedback.
Yeah. Basketball is not going away. It might get moved, but it's not going away.
Yeah.
Alderman, just like I saw your hand.
And, and possibly expanded, um, becau- because it is, for anybody who's been over in, in that, in those parks, it's a high demand, um, activity. So.
Right. Thank you.
Alderman Vaughn, I saw you lean forward. Did you have something you want to share?
I was looking at the dollar figure. We almost spent a hundred, uh, almost a hundred thousand dollars before we get started. And do everybody know what the value, what the, what the total price is, might be?
Uh, you mean the total price of the park? Or the total price that could be spent on Dalhough Thomas?
Yeah.
On Dalhough Thomas? Probably, I don't know, um, let me look at the.
I see right now we already sixty-one thousand dollars when we, when we sign this contract, right?
Yes, that's correct.
That's all we buying into this contract?
That's what.
This right here.
Yes, that's correct. Um, and there's a couple of other things. Most of the stuff, um, most of the stuff that were the add-ons, the things that the scope did not, uh, include were just, uh, I think branding and economic impact were one of the things. And we already had an economic impact study that we could tweak, that came with the master plan. Um, and other than that, construction documents and branding. Would that be accurate, Alderman?
Yeah. I would say, uh, reading the contract, what this, this is a pretty typical contract. This is for design services to get you, uh, to a master plan level. Uh, what this will do for us if we choose to move forward, some of these things where it talks about like, uh, utility study, uh, more detailed grain, drainage and grading and drainage studies, those, if they happen in this phase, if we decide to move forward with construction and move forward, that's going to push us further down the road more quickly. And so, yeah, this is going to be a plan. This, these documents aren't going to be the final product. This is going to be the plan for us to decide how we want to do it, what we want to do. And then from that standpoint, there would be a separate contract to go to construction documents to actually get the project built.
Anything else, Alderman Vaughn?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Uh, I have a motion and a second. No further discussion. Uh, if you would answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
Was that a name, Alderman Vaughn?
Nay.
Okay. All right. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. Um, we have, next we move to a special event request.
Move approval.
I have a motion to approve the special event quest, request for the 4th of July event. Now the second from Alderman Miller. Discussion? Discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please respond with a, with a yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Yea. Yea.
Thank you. All right. By, by a vote of six to one, the motion carries. All right. Happy Fourth, everybody. Be a good event. Um, all right. We have the claim stocking.
Move.
I have a motion from Alderman Little and a, and a, and a second from Alderman Sistrum. Discussion? Seeing none, if you would answer yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Vice Mayor Perkins.
Nay.
Alderman Vaughn.
Nay.
All right. By a vote of five to two, the motion carries. And that concludes all of our action items for board. We have.
Go into closed session.
All right. I have a motion to go into closed session to discuss personnel pending litigation. Uh, do I have a second? I need a second to go in. Second to go in. Hello? I need a second to go in. Thank you. I have a second from Alderman Sistrum. Any, any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying, oops, Alderman, Alderman, uh, Carver, you still there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. If you would, please respond, yea or nay as the city clerk calls your name. The motion is to go into executive session, or closed, closed session to go into executive session.
Alderman Carver.
Yea.
Alderman Sistrum.
Yea.
Alderman Little.
Yea.
Alderman Walker.
Yea.
Alderman Miller.
Yea.
Perkins, Alderman Vaughn.
Yea.
Okay. All right. By a, uh, vote of six to another, we'll be going into a closed session to determine the need for executive session. If you would clear the room, please.
No action in executive session. We're back in open session. Excuse me. The board took no action in executive session. And I'm gonna read a work session call here real quick and then we will adjourn. In accordance with the notice as required under Mississippi Code 254113, the board will be having a work session 29th of June 2018 at 12:00 p.m. That meeting will be held at City Hall, Second floor conference room located at 110 West Main Street. Public and media are invited to attend. That will be provided within one hour of this meeting. I posted such notice at City Hall. The notice for the work sessions will be made upon the minutes of the board meeting. Work session will be an open public meeting. Public and press are invited to attend. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Come on over.
The motion is signed. John, Second floor, Miller. Any further discussion? Alright, we are adjourned. All favorits be signified by saying aye. Sorry, aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned until July the 3rd, 2018, 5:00 a.m.